To stop rising. Lauren Sommer, NPR News.
These Buddhist monks are praying as a seven-foot-long crate is pried open at the National Museum of Cambodia. Inside, a giant statue of the Hindu elephant god Ganesha.
Oh, I never imagined such a huge sculpture.
The statue was stolen from a temple 20 years ago. Cambodians welcome at home on the world.
You can hear the world Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ.
Radio IQ receives support from Virginia 529, whose tuition-track portfolio allows families to save for college with savings designed to keep pace with inflation. Details at Virginia529.com. Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video chat or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
It's Here and Now. A fire at a migration detention center on the U.S.-Mexico border killed at least 39 people last night in Juarez, a reminder of the many dangers that migrants face when they're seeking asylum. For many, the journey doesn't end after entering the U.S. Many Central Americans continue on to Canada, where asylum claims are often processed more quickly. But a new policy unveiled Friday by Prime Minister Justin Trudeau and President Biden is tightening restrictions. For the first time in decades, migrants can no longer claim asylum after crossing Canada's land border, but with a few exceptions. And those who are caught permanently lose the right to ever make an asylum claim to Canada in the future. Dr. Myron Glick joins us now. He's CEO of Jericho Road Community Health Center in Buffalo, New York. The shelter served nearly 2,000 migrants seeking asylum last year alone. Dr. Glick, thanks for joining us.
You're welcome.
We constantly hear about migrants crossing into the U.S. from Mexico at the southern border. Tell us who's coming to the Canadian border to try and claim asylum from the U.S.?
Well, we find that the shelter that we run called Vive is that the same people that are crossing the southern border are also coming through Buffalo, and many of them are trying to get into Canada. In fact, our work has been referenced as the New Underground Railroad. In other words, there's this pathway from the southern border all the way up to Canada, and some of these folks come through Buffalo and visit our shelter.
Explain to us, Dr. Glick, why people are taking this so-called Underground Railroad once they've crossed the southern border to come to try and get to Canada. Why not claim asylum in the U.S.?
Well, first of all, our asylum-seeking process is pretty broken in this country. There's a huge backlog of cases. It's difficult for folks to get in front of a judge. It may take several years. And in the meantime, people living in the shadows, it's not always safe. And so Canada in the past has been sort of a beacon, has more relaxed immigration policy, and so it always draws people up to it.
Now, prior to this policy change on Friday, how did it work for migrants arriving first, say, to your shelter and then on to the border crossing?
Sure. When folks arrive at our shelter, if they have a family member who's legally in Canada, then it's a pretty straightforward process. But then about 50% of the folks that want to get into Canada don't have relatives in Canada. And so these are the ones who would then proceed up to the Roxham border crossing to get into Canada and then to be accepted as asylum seekers there.
We've seen reports of migrants still coming and trying at the Roxham Road border crossing, which is a spot just south of Montreal. Have you seen what's happening? Are they allowed to cross? Are people coming back to your shelter unsuccessful?
So so far, what we are hearing is that they're in detention in Canada and will be processed and then reintroduced into the United States. And we assume that some will come back to our shelter here in Buffalo. We've not actually gotten any folks yet. That's our assumption that that will happen.
Yeah. Do you think, Dr. Glick, that people will stop coming now that the policy says they cannot cross the border to claim asylum in Canada?
I think, you know, the bigger picture is we have to look at what's happening in our world. And our world is broken. There's so much suffering in places like Afghanistan and Haiti and some of the Central American countries. And as long as there's this suffering, as long as people are not safe and have to leave their home, there's always going to be a pressure on the West to accept folks who come to their borders as immigrants. So I think this may change the routes a little bit, but I don't think it will stem the tide of folks who are just desperately looking for a safe place to live.
Yeah, we've seen lots of families arriving there. People take a bus from New York City to get up to near the border region or to your shelter. And I'm just wondering, do you think they will still try to cross, given that it is still a little easier to seek asylum in Canada and maybe look for alternate parts of the border to cross at?
Yeah, I mean, our assumption is that probably more for now will stay at our shelter and try to get asylum status here in the United States. But as their cases are denied or as this process drags on, I think there still will be this pressure to get into Canada and that there will be other border crossings that people will try. It won't be nearly as safe, and that is one of the major critiques of this move by our governments. I mean, we know that this long journey that so many asylum seekers take is fraught with danger. Yesterday was a classic example. Forty people died in a Mexican facility because of a fire. You know, we hear stories all the time of people suffering along the way and even dying. And I don't think that will change, and this rule will just make it more likely that people will suffer.
Dr. Myron Glick is the founder and CEO of Jericho Road Community Health Center in Buffalo, New York. Dr. Glick, thank you so much for joining us.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Deepa Finn Anderson, Alameda, California.
I'm Robin Young in Boston. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Angie. Angie's List is now Angie, dedicated to helping homeowners get home projects done well. From everyday repairs to dream remodels, reviews, pricing, and booking are at angie.com or on the Angie app.
No doubt, they have had this sustained sense of determination for a long time. But I think they are getting the sense of what they're up against. This training facility...
Good afternoon. I would like to invite all who desire to stand for a moment of silence or personal prayer and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for March 28, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through the Rona County's website at www.ronaccountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-777-2205 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item I, A, excuse me, item A, opening ceremonies, roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone or change the order of agenda, fellow board members?
None.
Mr. Kaywood?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd like to request two changes. The first change is to remove item G4, which is under consent agenda, which is a street acceptance resolution. The developer still needs to give us a few more pieces of information before we can complete the processing of that item, so we'd ask for that to be removed, and we will put that on a future agenda. And then staff would also recommend adding an additional work session after our discussion with the police chief, which I believe will be item J2. And the purpose of the work session would be for additional board discussion slash question and answers with staff regarding the county administrator's proposed fiscal year 2024 budget and capital improvement program.
Thank you. Are there any injections by the board?
Nope.
Mr. Lubek?
Thank you. I have no changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item C, briefings. Briefing to discuss with the Board of Supervisors, the county administrator's proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating budget and proposed fiscal year 2024, 2033 capital improvement program. Mr. Richard Kaywood, county administrator, and Lori Gearhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome.
Only for you.
Got our technology going here. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is certainly my privilege to present the proposed FY23-24 operating budget and 24-33 capital improvement program. As you all know, the proposed budget follows many months of work and dialogue with the Board of Supervisors to put this budget together. And of course, there's a number of steps that follow. And for anyone watching and listening, we always like to point out that this is the county administrator's proposed budget. So after today's presentation and work session, we give the budget to the board, and certainly the final product will reflect changes that you all would like to make after today. I'd like to start by talking a little bit about the budget environment that we're in right now. I don't think you need to be an economist to know that there's a lot of things going on that have significant effects on both our budget and our ability to predict future things that we'll experience, both in terms of our revenues and also in terms of cost. We're in an environment where we are seeing lots of inflation, while not in historic and maybe a big-picture sense, certainly historic in recent times. And it kind of reminds me back in the late '70s when I was fairly young. I remember my parents looking out with some distress that the price of gas had reached $0.50 a gallon. And then I will recall shortly after that, they were putting little stickers with dollars on gas pumps that didn't have the ability to mechanically reflect a dollar as a price of gas per gallon. Some stations were selling gas in liters. While things aren't quite that bad, again, there are certainly some challenges and there's some risks associated with that in two different directions. And we're experiencing some of that in the current year. Risk number one is that revenues are less than what we think. But then an equally big risk in some sense is that our revenues may be more than what we think, but our costs are more as well, which is kind of some of what we've experienced in the current year. So certainly a lot of economic uncertainty. We've seen rising values of residential real estate and then a lot of volatility in personal property tax. So some of the air is coming out of the balloon of inflated used car values. Some vehicles are less than they were pre-pandemic. Some of the same vehicles are still more, but less than they were assessed at a year ago. And then finally, as been the case for the last several years, we are still anxiously awaiting a finalized budget for our friends in Richmond. But once again, that process is delayed. The, you know, certainly with the General Assembly, there's a lot of uncertainty. And at the moment, they've approved a skinny budget, but that doesn't tell us a lot of what we need to know. And what we're hearing from the comp board reverts back to the approved biennial budget, which shows a 5% increase for state and Commonwealth-supported local government employees. However, both the House and Senate's budget proposal include a 7% pay increase for their staff, which also has a lot of effect on our staff that are funded by the comp board. In theory, they're supposed to have this wrapped up soon. But again, I don't think that we have a lot of hope that the budget will be completed on April 12th or anytime really in the immediate near future. So a lot of what we're going to be doing going forward is going to be keeping a close eye on the happenings in Richmond and how they might affect kind of the finalization of our budget. There is some good news. We have continued to see robust investment in the county. When you count the two Corollian projects, as well as the restaurants that you see listed, that's over $80 million in investment just in Tanglewood in the last 18 months or less. So I think that that's very strong. And in fact, you will see here in a few slides, we're actually able to increase our revenue forecast really attributable to both meals and cigarette tax. But we think a lot of this growth we're seeing in meals is coming out of that immediate Tanglewood area. And we still have the Chili's and Popeyes opening soon to add to that. But the new restaurants at Tanglewood have been performing extremely well, which is certainly positive for our revenue picture. Also, the Galen School of Nursing is opening in the Metis Plaza building, so that building is almost completely occupied now. And I think that has exceeded all expectations for just a great adaptive reuse as office space. I think that five years ago, if folks had predicted that, no one would have believed them, how successful that has been. So that's been really good for our local economy. And then we have another low-scale, so Galen School of Nursing is a low-scale project. We also have the opening and operation of the new emergency room facility. I like to call it Bon Sac still. I know technically its name is Blue Hills, but we would call that their Bon Sac area facility. And that's generating, again, traffic and probably also good for the business there, Chick-fil-A, which is certainly a big contributor to our meals tax. And in addition to that, we have an industrial project that is coming online in North America's special laminations just around the corner on Benoit, and then the Lowes Distribution Center in West Salem. So that leads us into some of the overall themes that we'll be talking about today. The first one is some tax relief, and we'll get into that in more detail in a couple of slides. But more thematically, just continued robust support for our county public schools, recognizing our employees, because we need to retain a really great staff to have a great community, our strong commitment to public safety, which I think certainly even recent things we see in the news just reemphasizes the importance of having a safe community and excellent first responders, continuing to invest in both our capital and technology. And then the last two, I think, kind of go together, which is just really having a quality of life that's attractive for folks who would want to invest in our community. Some of that's things we do, some of that are things that happen at a regional level. But I think we have created an environment that is really good for folks to want to have a business here, want to build a home here and have a life here in the county. The next slide is probably the one that will get the most attention, I think, at least for the first county administrator budget proposal since I've worked at the county. Staff is recommending some fairly significant changes to our tax rates. The first one I'll hit is the real estate tax rate. The proposed budget is based on reducing the real estate tax rate from $1.09 per $100 value to $1.05 of $100 in assessed value. And this would represent the first real estate tax reduction since the FY07 budget.
What point of order? I think you said $1.05. Don't you mean $1.07?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to surprise us?
No, I'm sorry. $1.09 to $1.07. That was a, not even a Freudian slip, just a slip of the tongue.
It's a surprise in the budget.
Yes, $1.09 to $1.07. And the last time these rates were adjusted were in FY06 and 07. I think in FY06, there was a 2 cents reduction. That's not 2%, 2 cents. And then a 1 cent in 07. The next proposed reduction would be a personal property tax rate reduction of 10 cents per $100 value to take that rate from $3.50 to $4.50 per $100 value. Lori had to dig really, really deep in the archives to find the last time we had adjusted this tax rate. That goes all the way back to the first Reagan administration in 1982, at which time the county raised its personal property tax rate from $3.25 to the current $3.50. So that rate has been the same for a very, very long time. The next is an additional reduction in machinery and tools from $2.85 to $2.80 per 100. And then the last is to increase the amount of revenue that you can have that's subject to just the $50 minimum fee on B-Pole from $1.35 to $1.50, which for the folks who would fall into that category does represent a significant avoidance of B-Pole tax. But again, I want to go back, just didn't mean to misspeak, so $1.09 to $1.07 on real estate tax rate. I do think it's important to point out that all of these changes to rates have effect to both the current fiscal year budget, as well as the one we are talking about for FY24. And again, in our work session, staff is happy to speak more about the effects that they would have in both of those, although the balance of today's presentation will focus primarily on FY24. Supports the schools. This does represent the highest transfer that the schools have received from the county, both in terms of dollars, but also this will be a higher percentage of our budget than the schools received in the preceding year. If you add these all together, this is, I believe, just under $100 million in support for our county school system, $87.25 million in formulaic support to their operating, $7.1 million in capital, and then $1.88 is a part of our revenue for CSA. Moving on along, what really makes us a great place to live, in my opinion, are not only the folks who live here and the business establishments, but also the county staff that supports a lot of the good things that we see in the county. You can see some of our great members of our team here in the background with our planning staff, who are development services staff, a lot of whom are now working with our new comprehensive plan. But the proposed budget does offer a 7% cost of living increase for all county employees. And in the detailed materials that you have provided with the transmittal letter, one of the things that you will see is our wages here at the county have certainly not kept pace with inflation. And even with this increase as proposed, unless inflation is somehow less than 2%, that's a break-even point for our folks. If anything beyond 2% inflation, we would see in FY24, they would certainly still be as many folks are behind the curve by keeping up with inflation. But certainly, this would be helpful. And again, this was set at this level to kind of marry up with the increases that are proposed by the Commonwealth. The other big financial item related to pay is this is the third year of three years of implementation for the Great Step system for our public safety employees. So this does have a significant cost. However, the good news is this will be the last year of significant cost associated with the implementation of that system. One of the really good things about that is certainly we've seen a lot of results from that in folks wanting to become police officers and retention and our other public safety branches with fire and rescue and the sheriff's office. And then also, I guess this does include the Great Step system for our emergency communication staff as well. And again, I think we've seen some improvements there, although probably not everything we'd want to see. We're certainly making good progress, so a lot of value to that. One thing I really would like to emphasize is, I think we all recognize, in an inflationary environment, that probably hurts the folks the most who have the least, especially some of our lower-wage employees, because when we go to Kroger to buy bread, the impact of those price changes, I should have used eggs as a better example, the less you make, the more you feel those effects. And one place that we see is something similar in our programs is with insurance. And so one of the things we're proposing in the budget is to keep the insurance rates that the employees pay the same and have no increase. As you will see later in some of the slides Lori showed you, there is a cost to the county to do this, but we do not want to pass on that cost to our employees. And we also want to offer increases in pay to our part-time staff, who do perform a lot of valuable services for the county. That's just part of our commitment to public safety. Obviously, our proposed budget continues the investments that we need to make in fleet to support public safety, fire and rescue overtime, which is always a challenge with our staffing model for fire and rescue. We are providing funding for 15 fire and rescue positions that were part of a safer grant that is now at the, will come to the end of its life midway through this budget process. We do have some new staff here, but I want to stress that the ones on this slide are all primarily paid for by the county with a relatively small match from the county, by the Commonwealth with a small match from the county. So we have a total of six social service folks who are paid for, again, primarily by a Commonwealth grant with us picking up a match. And then the same thing with a behavioral healthcare manager in the county jail. So there's a small county portion of those. And then in addition, we are proposing funding to fully fund the part-time personnel from the sheriff's office, who currently serve as SROs in our county schools. You'll notice the number there is only six. However, the full-time sheriff employees, who are also currently serving in SRO capacities, are already in your budget. They have been before. I will point out that our proposal is to fund these through beginning balance, so the cost for these positions will not be in the base budget. And it's our intention to try to be in a position to fully carry the load of this program with the police department, starting in FY25. So the budget is crafted with that assumption in mind by not putting it in the base. However, for some reason, we don't have the strength in the police department to do it at that time. We'll revisit this issue, but that is the way the budget is crafted, with this being a one-time expense essentially for us that's built in, again, as beginning balance. Also, we want to continue the investments we make for capital maintenance and recurring items, so the proposed budget doubles the capital maintenance that we have. That's one perennial concern that I hear from board members and I agree with, is what are we doing to take care of the assets that we have now, particularly given the cost of replacing public facilities is very high, so we want to take better care of what we currently have. We are continuing to purchase heavy fleet and equipment, both in fire and rescue and for our solid waste services. One item is inescapable in the modern... One item that's inescapable in the modern world is what is called software as a service. So I think as you are all aware, the days where you bought software and you own something have largely ended, and we are somewhat at the mercy of our various vendors who have made some rather large increases in the either monthly or annual fee that we have to pay for necessary software that runs our business. So again, Lori can detail that a little bit more. And finally, we have the incremental increase necessary to fund the 171717 capital program. Obviously, it is envisioned to move here in a few years to a 202020, but for now, we're having an incremental gain for 171717. Quality of life and keeping that good is very important, so one of the things that we are continuing to include in the budget is the match we use for our transportation program, because I would actually say that a lot of the success that we see in the Tanglewood area is a combination of a really good planning with some capital investment in highway. And there's still more of that to come, but I think the public improvements kind of showed that there was an interest on the county's part in investing in the infrastructure, which I think encouraged some of the private investment that you do see. So I think those two were hand in glove, and now we have some significant efforts that are getting ready to happen on the 460/Challenger Avenue corridor. There's some additional work underway on the 419 corridor, and then the, kind of what I would call the big project, which is going to be at 419 and 220, and down 220 is getting ready to start in the not-too-distant future. So a lot of things that are in process there, and it's very important to continue to fund that. We're also increasing funding for support for sports and some of our youth athletic programs, some small increases for the VCE that works out of our Brambleton Center. We will hit now the one and only new full-time position that the county is proposing this year, and that would be to add a planner one to work in code enforcement. And as I know, the board is very well aware, as our county staff, we get many, many, many calls from citizens. Right now, we have two people to cover the entire landmass of the county and over, I believe, around 45,000-plus parcels. And quite frankly, we're in a situation now where we're just not able to be as responsive as we would like when either you or a citizen has an inquiry of us, just from a capacity standpoint, how long it takes us to get to that particular complaint, and then sometimes the court processes involved can get very lengthy and time-consuming, and just two people can't adequately cover a county of our size with the citizen concern volume that we receive. The last item there, I think, is a very positive one. We have gotten excellent citizen response from the checkout Wi-Fi hotspots that we offer through our library system. Those so far have been funded with CARES Act funding, which will be running out, so we are putting some money in the budget to continue that program on. I do hope there's a certain point in the future where there's enough broadband that those will no longer be popular, but right now, they are very popular, and we would like to continue that offering to our citizens. And then last but not least, everybody always likes animal pictures, so we'll have a dog in the background for this one. I believe this animal is an RCACP animal. We are seeing some increased cost at the RCACP. They are county employees, so some of the increase in cost is related to the salary proposal that you saw earlier, but then also, in the past year, a greater percentage of the animals that are coming into the shelter are county animals, and so there's a formulaic analysis that's done to determine the appropriate cost share between us and the other regional partners. We have a similar story the other direction at the regional jail. There's been a decline in inmates and increasing cost, both due to compensation and just inflationary costs for food and other things that are needed at the jail. In addition to that, we are also having to pay our share of the debt principal service in addition just to the interest, so that cost is increasing, so you'll see some increases there. Fortunately, no change in tipping fee for the landfill this year, which is a positive. We do have the formulaic increase to visit Virginia's Blue Ridge, but that's good news because that means our hotel motel tax is performing well, and we anticipate giving them more money as a result of that. And then the last one, and this is one edit that will have to be made going forward versus what is in your pocket and what Lori will have later, is the operating subsidy for the broadband authority. As the board will recall, as it was originally envisioned, the operating subsidy was supposed to stop with last year's budget, and I believe we were somewhere in the $3.25, $3.50 a year range for that subsidy. The broadband authority requested $250,000 a year, really in perpetuity, from the partner localities. I had some discussions with my peers, the other managers involved, and we agreed in what the broadband authority budget is based on is there to be one final year of subsidy, only at $100,000 from the three partner localities, and then we've said nothing thereafter, kind of as a step down. I do believe the document you have before you may be reflective of $150,000, and not 100, but the number should be $100,000. And then, you know, the broadband authority is looking at its long-range future, and, you know, will continue to support that process, but I think all of the managers involved have made it clear that the operating subsidy does have to come to an end. So with that, before I hand the podium over to Lori, I'd just like to thank the board for all of your participation in the budget process to date. In addition to what Lori is going to present to you, we look forward to answering even more of your questions in work session at the conclusion of today's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Kay Wood, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. I will now review in more detail our proposed fiscal year 2023-24 operating revenues and At our work session held on February 14th, staff shared with the board a projection for fiscal year 24 revenues based on information at that time. These were preliminary estimates which were developed by the revenue team. Since then, additional data has been received, and as a result, some additional changes have been made. The real estate tax has mostly been changed for the tax reduction. We have recently received updated information from the Commissioner of Revenue on personal property, which is reflected in the changes. As discussed earlier with the board, the $39.2 million per personal property tax included a formulaic change for the PPTRA like we did for the 2022 tax. This change has been eliminated, and the change in personal property is now through the actual tax rate change from $3.50 to $3.40. The board could still consider some tax relief through additional PPTRA, and we will share more detail later today at a work session. We do continue to see growth in our sales tax, along with our meals and cigarette taxes. And our Commonwealth and federal revenues are flow-through revenues for specific programs and reimbursements, and cannot be used for everyday general government expenditures. And as a reminder, any change, tax change affects the current year as well as the future year. And since we have already established the school revenue sharing formula for the current year, the county bears the whole effect of any tax change in the current year. We have categorized our increase in general government expenditures on the budget themes Mr. Kay Wood discussed earlier. While we just discussed the substantial increase in our revenues, as you can see by this slide, those revenues are going to fund two main categories: support for our schools and retaining and recognizing our employees. Just these two categories alone total $18.47 million of our total increase in revenues of $23.36 million. So as you consider the budget for revenues, we need to also consider this slide as well. And then the next few slides, we will detail the expenditures in each category based on the summary shown here. Support for our schools is an important function of our budget. An increase of $8.69 million has been added to our transfer to Rona County Public Schools' operating budget, which is based on our revenue sharing formula for a total of $87,238,828 for just their operating budget. The proposed budget includes $9,773,374 for retaining and recognizing employees. This includes a 7% cost of living increase for all county employees, including public safety and emergency communication, as well as funding for career paths, competency adjustments, and changes in base personnel. The 7% increase is based on what we are seeing from the Commonwealth, the Rona County Public Schools, and other surrounding localities. The county will also finalize the third and last year of implementing the public safety step plans. And in our effort to not pass any increased cost to our employees, we are including $300,000 to go into our health insurance fund. And we have included funding to provide additional part-time increases for various departments. An additional $1,474,683 has been included in the proposed budget for continuing our commitment to public safety. This includes additional funding for the end of the 2021 SAFER grants to bring 15 full-time equivalents into the general fund mid-year, as well as funding for additional training for our career staff. $39,660 has been added to improve the police forensic lab and their online reporting, as well as $41,266 for a part-time range master for our firing range, and $87,000 in funding for lasers and equipment. The proposed budget includes $318,603 for the six part-time school resource officers in the sheriff's department, and a jail behavioral healthcare manager in the amount of $71,500, with the costs being offset by reimbursement from the comp board. And as discussed at a work session held on December 13th, two family service specialists and four benefit program specialists have been added to help with the continued demand in our social services department. To strengthen our investment in capital and technology, the proposed budget includes an increase of $2,233,593. The transfer to our capital fund has been increased by $1.5 million to fund our maintenance programs and recurring items. And $300,000 is attributable to the incremental increase needed to maintain the county joint school debt model. And $370,000 is provided for increase to our software as a service and other technology software maintenance costs. The proposed budget includes $349,735 for enhancing quality of life. Funding has been provided for current planning, transportation, project opportunities, and an increase of $45,000 has been added for sports tournaments, youth sports officials, and other parks and recreation and tourism special events. Increase in salaries have required the county to increase our funding for the Virginia Cooperative Extension Services, which has also caused an increase in funding to the Blue Ridge Behavioral Health, along with an increase in demand for their services by our county residences. A planner one position is being added to increase responsiveness to our citizens. And funding of $50,000 is being added for Wi-Fi hotspots for citizens without home broadband access, which has been previously funded by CARES Act monies. Continuing support for regional programs is being provided in the amount of $829,706. The per diem rate cost, as well as the debt service at the Western Virginia Regional Jail, is increasing, along with the funding needed to support our portion of the juvenile detention center. The required contribution to visit Virginia Blue Ridge is increasing due to the proposed increase in hotel motel tax revenue, and we are experiencing a rise in our costs for the Regional Center for Animal Care and Protection, based on an increase in usage based on the animal population and employee compensation and benefits. An RV TV is also increasing based on increases in their operating budgets. So with the additional investments in our budget themes, the proposed operating budget increases by $23.4 million for a total fiscal year 23-24 proposed operating budget of $244,372,999. Staff presented the capital improvement program to the Board of Supervisors in detail at a work session held on February 28, 2023. At that time, the CIP project and funding priorities were shared, which continued to be our continued funding to support maintenance of facilities and our technology infrastructure, our continued commitment to prioritize funding for the replacement and improvements of our county facilities, and our continued progress on commitments to promote community and economic As a reminder, in the past, we have presented the CIP by functional teams. However, this year, we have changed our presentation to present by categories that include building-in facilities, capital maintenance plans and recurring items, transportation, assessments and studies, computer infrastructure, software and hardware. The only change that has been made since the February work session is the removal of $630,000 from the fiscal year 2533 column and the total column for the second set of turnout gear for fire and rescue. The county is pursuing an opportunity to fund this with a grant, so the project has been removed at this time. Projects for fiscal year 2024 include improvements to the Public Safety Center and Courthouse heating and air conditioning systems, continued support for our capital maintenance and recurring items, zoning and housing assessments, feasibility studies, and technology upgrades and infrastructure needs. The fiscal year 2024 proposed funding column has no changes and remains at $10,422,628. For the funding of our projects, we continue to utilize various resources available to us to make this a realistic and affordable CIP for fiscal year 24. Again, our fiscal year 2024 column has not changed since our February 28th work session, and the only change made in the last two columns is once again, the removal of the second set of gear by reducing the general fund transfer and the use of capital reserves. So as we prepare for the future, we will continue to develop long-range financial forecasts with multi-year budgeting. The county will continue its conservative debt management program while analyzing upcoming potential borrowings while keeping within our debt ratios. We will continue to analyze and plan our 10-year plans for capital improvement, vehicle replacement, and capital maintenance. And we will analyze and provide for reserves for unappropriated balance, expenditure contingency, and other fund balances. And we welcome any questions or comments from the board.
Any questions, board members, comments? Yes, Mr. Peters.
So first, I guess I want to say that I am thankful for fulfilling that commitment to our public safety, finishing up our scale, the step plan that we had put out there a couple of years ago. I'm glad to see us fulfilling that. So under the new budget, we're transferring $96 million to the schools? Is that what I understood on the slide?
Well, we're transferring $87 million to their operating budget. Then we pay on their behalf $1.88 million to the Children's Services Act. So we pay $1.88, and then we pay the schools $1.88. So it doesn't really go to the, well, it kind of goes to schools, and then they turn around and give it back to us to go for that. And then the $7.1 million in debt service, we just directly pay that, but it is on the schools' debt issuances that they have had over the years.
Okay. I just want a clarification on that. And then, I think my other question for now is, while I really got hopeful when I heard Mr. Kay would say $1.05, I would like to see if there was a possibility of us meeting in the middle at $1.06. So I would like to lay that out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Any comments? Yes.
So all these numbers, of course, that are presented, especially the high-level numbers, are based upon a number in February for the year-over-year growth. The growth could be more than that, once we know more about sales tax revenues, meals tax between now and, say, the end of June. Isn't that correct?
Potentially.
Yes. And that also then could impact the schools' operating revenue transfer. Is that correct?
Well, the transfers to the schools are really fixed essentially on July 1 each budget year. So if, you know, we don't make kind of equalization transactions after that. So if revenues are better than expected, they just get what they were promised. If revenues were worse than expected, they still get what they were promised. And as Lori mentioned earlier, if you make tax rate changes that affect the current fiscal year, the schools are held harmless from that. So their transfer from this year has already occurred, and that will not be revisited based on our past practices. And then the same thing will occur as of July 1, looking forward to FY '24.
Okay. Another question.
Can I get clarification on that quickly?
I'm not finished.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Slide 20 on there, it says incremental increase in maintaining joint funding for 171717. That's the 300,000. We all know that that number could change when we go to 202020, but it also could change depending upon what we finally come to agreement with on the schools.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I just want to make a point of clarification. I know there was discussion amongst board members, I think at the last meeting. When do we transfer to the schools? Is it monthly, by monthly? Is it a one-time lump? How do we do that?
We normally do it on a monthly basis.
Okay.
But the calculation is once, right? So it's given to the schools month by month, but it's not recalculated.
So if we go up in revenues over the year, they're still stuck with the number given to them July 1?
Correct. Whether revenue changes up or down has been the current policy and practice is based around doing a one-time calculation, which again, you see both ends of that in the current year where revenues are higher than projected, but then again, they may change due to tax rate changes. So those are just, with the current practice, is invisible to the school. So they're held harmless for below, you know, projections that kind of go below expectations, but then they do not share in benefits if revenues are above projections. So there's not a sort of an even-out clause at the end of the year. It's just set on July 1.
That's, I will say, that's the clarification I was looking for, because I knew that during COVID, I guess the year after COVID, we held them harmless, even though our revenues were below where we were projecting, we held them harmless. So, and I think that's when the discussion came up, how do we switch and transfer it over? What does that look like? Is it monthly, quarterly, whatever? And does that number fluctuate? Or is it whatever's July 1, like during COVID, July 1 is what they were given, and even though it wasn't beneficial to us because revenues didn't hit where we need them to, they were held harmless.
And that's just something the board may want to think about as you think about the budget. You know, that practice certainly could be changed with that arrangement. There's pros and cons to that, both directions, as to whether or not the current system really meets your desires. But again, it is, I do think during COVID, there was a couple of, like a sort of a one-time action where the original projections were worse than what happened, and you all did choose to give them some additional revenue, I believe, in a mid-year adjustment. That has not been the historical practice. So I think that whole policy and formula is something that, you know, we're welcome to share more information about if you all would like to look at it. But again, it's a little bit counterintuitive, particularly when you think about tax rate decreases where obviously their projections and the funding that was already given to the schools was based on those rates remaining stable, and now if we look to reduce them, we would absorb all of that cost. That's not shared with the schools at all.
So for this remaining calendar year, the county would take the hit, the whole percentage?
Think about, a good example to use is personal property tax. That is essentially collected at the end. So from July 1 of last year through June 30 of this year's bill, you know, really close to the end of the fiscal year. So we had already made a projection for that total, you know, this time last year. The school's transfer was based on that calculation. So when we go to receive the actual personal property taxes, theirs will, their receipt will be unaffected by any changes you make to either the rate or the adjustment. Now, it happened last year, we adjusted actually to a little bit below budget, so they just got the budgeted amount for last year, their share of that. This year would probably be much the same, but again, a recalculation is not done because changes were made on our side.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney.
Yeah, following up on Mr. Peters' remark about going to 106, would it be safe to say, looking at the first slide, where you projected 244,372,999, would it be safe to say that the tax relief would be another million dollars if we went to 106?
It'd be approximately 1.108 million dollars.
Okay.
And we are prepared to show you what that would look like.
You mean at the work?
At the work session.
Yeah, yeah, just as follow-up. We don't have it in the slides for today, but we do, we are prepared to share what you would make cuts to do that if you were inclined to do that.
For more discussion. Any other questions for staff? Any other questions? Thank you.
Can I do that one more? Sorry.
Hold on.
So as you stated before, so our budget went up $23 million, we're looking at 3.59 million in tax relief. You're saying half of that would come, the schools would only be, would only feel half of that? Is that what you're trying to tell us?
Going forward.
Going forward, correct. So it's a little complicated in the fact that, take real estate, for instance. We're proposed a 2-cent tax cut currently. We had already projected for the current year, fiscal year '23, we, when we did first half, second half, we based second half on $1.09, right? But when we change the tax rate April 11th, then the bills will be printed, and they will go out and have a June 5 date, and they will be taxed at $1.07. So we've now reduced what we have projected for our revenues. We will not cut what we give the schools. It will just reduce what we keep.
Right. Gotcha.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Very informative. So moving on to Item D, New Business Resolution. One, Designating Signatory Authority for Grant Applications to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. And two, Voluntary Agreeing to Meet the Authority's Gold Standard Requirements for Fiscal Years '20, '23, and '20, '24. Madeline Sethcheck, Assistant to the County Administrator, welcome.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me? Madam Chair and members of the board, I'm here today before you to present a resolution for your consideration in which you will designate the county administrator or his designee as having authority to apply and accept grant funds for the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority or the OAA, and also voluntarily agree to meet the opioid abatement authority's gold standard requirements for fiscal year '20, '23, and '20, '24. As recently reviewed during a work session at your last meeting on March 14th, the board may use funds received from opioid litigation settlements in your efforts to mitigate and abate the impacts of the opioid epidemic in Roanoke County. One of the ways that the county can receive funding is through the OAA, whose mission is to abate and remediate the opioid epidemic in the Commonwealth through fiscal support in the forms of grants, donations, and other assistance to localities. The OAA has invited each city and county in Virginia to submit proposals for grants. Based on the direction from the board shared during your recent work session, we have prepared a resolution in which the board authorizes the county administrator or his designee to apply and accept funds from the OAA and agrees to abide by the terms of the OAA's gold standard for fiscal years '23 and '24. With adoption of the OAA's gold standard, the county will receive an additional 25% in OAA funding eligibility in the next two fiscal years. With that being said, staff recommends approval of the prepared resolution. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any further questions. I'll also have Mr. Lu Beck here for any litigation or legal questions you may have.
Thank you, Madeline. Are there any questions for staff?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, so if we apply for a grant, will we get 25% more because we elected the gold standard?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mahoney.
Assuming we are successful, assuming we adopt the resolution and we are successful with the grant application, and we receive the funds set forth in the resolution and the board report, there are only three months remaining in the current fiscal year. Number one, do we have any idea of when OAA may award the grants? And number two, assuming they award the grant within a month, which is very optimistic, do we have enough time in the current fiscal year to meet all the Virginia Public Procurement Act requirements and still be able to find an appropriate opportunity to spend the funds? I'm assuming we're going to be hiring some entity to provide treatment or rehabilitation, whatever, within the scope of the, the scope of the OAA grant. My only concern is, do we have enough time to meet Public Procurement Act requirements and still be able to utilize the funds in the positive thought that we would be awarded the grant? Does that make sense?
Yes. So I'll take, yes, a portion of the question, and then for the procurement rules and regulations, I'll punt that to Mr. Lu Beck. The first answer is, the way that the OAA has stated that they're going to award the grants is on a rolling basis. Last I checked, the OAA was meeting, it looked like at the end of each month. So each month, they publish the date that they have the committee that will review and distribute the funding. So on a rolling basis, we will receive the funding. I would have to check back on the exact timing of that. As far as the procurement laws, we did look into that, and we do have to abide by them, which would be a lengthier process than just selecting a group to work with.
So I guess worst case, as we go through that procurement process, and perhaps it takes longer than we anticipate, but if we sign a contract, let's say on June 27th, you just, what's the term? You allocate the funds, you may not spend it till later, but you can allocate it back to the previous fiscal year? Does that make sense?
And sir, that is correct. And good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Yes, I do understand that the grants will be awarded for both this fiscal year and the next, and if the funds are not expended due to procurement delays, they can and will be carried over to the next year. So that, I don't anticipate that that would be a problem. And just as a point of clarification, that there are two types of grants. Supervisor North had asked if the 25% would be awarded for grants, and they will be awarded to us automatically, since the board has today, if the board does adopt that resolution proposed today, the 25% will be automatic for grants that are specific to the county. The county is guaranteed the amount set aside for us individually by the Opioid Abatement Authority. That being said, we just have to apply for it. If we apply for an appropriate project, we're guaranteed those funds, and we are also guaranteed the 25%. We are not guaranteed an additional 25% for grants that are cooperative in nature that we would apply for together with other localities. Just a quick point of clarification.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Yes, I'd like to move the motion.
And a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item E, First Reading of Ordinances. Emergency ordinance authorizing the acceptance of public access easement located at 7515 Friendship Lane for a sidewalk on private property along Plantation Road and Friendship Lane, Hollins Magisterial District. Due to time constraints for the project, it is requested that the second reading be dispensed with upon an affirmative vote of four-fifths of the members of the board, and that this matter be deemed an emergency measure pursuant to Section 18.04 of the Roanoke County Charter. Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Board of Supervisors must adopt an ordinance to acquire a permanent public access easement for public use of sidewalk to be constructed along Plantation Road and Friendship Lane in the Hollins Magisterial District. An emergency ordinance is requested to facilitate the expeditious transfer of the property. The Plantation Road Bicycle Pedestrian and Streetscape Improvement Project was initiated in 2009 to implement the 2008 Hollins Area Plan. The original project's scope included both sides of Plantation Road extended from Williamson Road to Interstate 81 and proposed connecting Walron Park with the Tinker Creek Greenway envisioned along Carvin Creek by constructing bicycle and/or pedestrian accommodations along Walron Drive and Friendship Lane. Three phases of the project have been funded and constructed through several transportation programs since 2009. Phase two of the project, which was completed in 2022, included construction of a crosswalk with pedestrian signals at the Friendship Lane Plantation Road corner and the public right-of-way adjacent to this subject property. Due to funding constraints, sidewalk was not constructed along the east side of Plantation or along Friendship Lane with that project. Insight Real Estate Investment Properties LLC, Insight, entered into a purchase and sale contract with Margaret O. Clapperick for the property located at 7515 Friendship Lane in May 2022. Insight requested that the property be rezoned from R2 Medium Density Residential District to C2 High Intensity Commercial District to construct a drive-in or fast-food restaurant, which was called a quick-serve coffee shop, in June of 2022. The Board of Supervisors approved the rezoning request with proper conditions in August of 2022. As part of the site plan review process, which is now completed, Insight included sidewalk along the property's Plantation Road and Friendship Lane frontage to conform with a proper concept plan. It is Insight's preference to construct the sidewalk on its property instead of installing curb gutter and sidewalk in VDOT right-of-way. Because the sidewalk, which is intended for public use, will be constructed on private property, a permanent public access easement is needed. The site plan for the coffee shop, as I said, has been approved, and Insight has not yet purchased a subject property. The properties, the parties to the deed of easement are the Board of Supervisors and Margaret O. Clapperick, who's the current property owner. Staff has requested the Board of Supervisors adopt this ordinance with only one reading as an emergency measure to facilitate the expeditious transfer of the property from Mrs. Clapperick to Insight. Insight's inclusion of sidewalk along Plantation Road and Friendship Lane implements the 2008 Hollins Area Plan, the 2020 Hollins Center Plan, and the Plantation Road Bicycle Pedestrian and Streetscape Improvement Project. There is no fiscal impact associated with this item, and staff recommends the approval of the ordinance, and it is requested upon a four-fifth vote of the board, the second reading be waived, and the ordinance be adopted as an emergency measure. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency measure with four-fifths?
Madam Chair, I move the motion to adopt the ordinance as an emergency measure under E1 with a four-fifth vote to waive the second reading.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the secretary please call the roll?
Question. Would this action require the board to go back and amend the proffer from the rezoning? Or do we have sufficient authority under site plan review language that we had in that ordinance to accommodate this modification? But my fear is, do we have to go back and amend what we did last year?
I believe the proffer was written to indicate substantial conformance with the concept plan, and providing sidewalk in either location is substantial conformance.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great questions. Now, we'll go back to the clerk. If you would please call the roll. It's okay. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item F, Appointments. Ask if any board member has an appointment that has not been given to the clerk. Any new appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
For EDA, for Windsor Hills District, I asked Sonny Shaw to be reappointed. He accepted.
Okay. We'll add that to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, and so to the consent agenda, so we are going, is there any board member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No, ma'am. I'll make a motion to approve with the removal already directed to G4, and then the addition by Mr. Radford.
Excellent. And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. And so Item H is Citizen Comments and Communications. And Madam Clerk, I only have one to speak. Did you have any others?
That's all I have.
Okay, so we have a three-minute policy. If you would please come forward. Mr. Richard?
Hamburger.
Thank you. Hamburger, thank you, and welcome.
Thank you.
And just as a clarification in our process, you have
And just as a clarification in our process, you have three minutes to speak, and it makes sense with the green, yellow, and red. Welcome. We're glad to hear. Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the Glow Fiber project and its impact on our neighborhood. I live in 8124 Golden Oak Lane. They showed up in, at the end of February, started digging holes, pulling conduit, and then walked away from the job. They have not restarted as of this day. There were holes, there were piles of dirt. It's a mess, to the point where our landscapers had to mow around the stuff. I can't get the place mulched because it's, he's going to be digging up the mulch beds. We get no response. Talked to Glow Fiber, promised to return phone call, nothing. They sent the supervisor, who is a sub of Glow Fiber, who's supervising the other subs, he had no idea where they were. They just disappeared. And it's a local company. In short, what we're dealing with is a mess. The workers, we think, damaged our gazebo. They threw their garbage, chicken bones, just on the lawns. It is a completely incompetent group of people. Glow Fiber doesn't want to accept responsibility. And I would ask that you tell Glow Fiber, timeout. Don't do anything more than accounting until you come up with a plan. I heard last night that they're talking about the end of April, and they'll be out of here. That concerns me. I don't want them to be out of here until our neighborhood's put back the way it was.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming. And I just want to direct staff, I know that we've had some dealings with this and in other areas, unfortunately, and so we have some contacts that maybe staff could reach out and get some mitigation here.
Yes, and Madeline and Doug have done a good job, I think, at least, trying to stay on, and we have had challenges across the county. We do speak to folks from Glow Fiber every Friday morning at 8:30, and we will continue to do all we can to get them to clean up. And as I think the board is aware, their actual permit is with the Commonwealth through VDOT, not the county, so we don't have direct control. But I experienced similar things. Actually, my own yard has some issues right now as well, and they've been in my neighborhood. So we're going to continue to do everything we can as staff, and I think you have reached out to some of our folks, but we're going to continue to encourage you.
Yes, and they've been very helpful.
Yeah, keep in touch with us, and we will do everything we can to force as much restoration as possible with the company.
Well, let me be clear. They haven't finished the project. They've gotten the conduit on one side of the street, they haven't done the other side. We have half of this to go yet. We don't know where they are.
Understood.
Madam Chair, if I will.
Yes, sir.
I've encountered this problem before personally, but also with other people. I'd like to ask staff, if you don't mind, this, instead of waiting to Friday and bringing it up, let's get a hold of the Government Affairs representative, who will get a hold of the regional manager, and have them come down and meet and take a look at this for this gentleman in his name.
We can certainly do that.
We appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Hamburger.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
Can I ask, well, I'll give him just a minute. So, Mr. Kwood, I know that I have called you frequently due to the same issue where they're digging holes in our streets and leaving, and I know that you keep, and I know that you're right, that they have the permitting through VDOT, not through us, but is there any way we can go back through VDOT and have VDOT help us, or State of Virginia apply some pressure to get these things done properly? Because whether it's EdgeV, I mean, I can go through my subdivisions, one after one, Montgomery Village, all of them, that they've come through there and just tore everything up, they're leaving potholes in the middle of the street, and, you know, we've had to go back and forcefully, kindly ask them to fill the holes. Is it, can we get some help at another layer of government that we're not able to do ourselves?
I think, you know, Mr. Nor's suggestion is a good one to certainly, we can elevate, we've actually sat down in person with, you know, some of their higher-level folks. I think there might be a good opportunity to do that again. I just want to keep expectations reasonable, just because we don't have a permit to pull, so our direct authority is somewhat limited, but I think staff is fully committed to doing everything within our power. And that could even be inviting maybe a rep to come see you at the board meeting and speak to you directly. I think there's a number of tools, but they're mostly tools of pressure rather than direct control that we would wish that we had, because I think we could be a little more assertive. But again, I went and actually bought some things this weekend to work on my own yard with some frustration, where I had a piece of equipment go down the front where it was very, very wet, and I had two nice tire tracks that were six inches deep, and it's, it has been frustrating. And I think particularly, spring is coming, and I think a lot of the areas aren't growing grass, it's going to be very frustrating to neighbors as well, so.
We appreciate your help on that. Thank you. Thank you for being so involved. We really appreciate that. Moving on to item I, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item J, work sessions. We have two work sessions scheduled, the first one being work session to discuss the new police chief's division for the Police Department with the Board of Supervisors. Michael Poindexter, Chief of Police, we're looking forward to that. And item number two, work session for additional discussion and Q and A on the county administrator's proposed fiscal year 2024 budget and capital improvement program with Mr. Kwood. So the board will now recess to the third floor for a work session and return at 7:00 PM for its evening session. Thank you.